Couple minutes, clock is ticking slowly.
Ed, you want to come down here?
Gil's here, now we can get started. Actually Ed is getting pushed out the door.
Keep shoving him there.
One more step, I'm out the door.
Hey, good morning, I'd like to welcome you all to the Wednesday, August 28th, 2013 Planning Commission. We'll start with a roll call, please.
Gong.
Here.
Millies.
Here.
Elliot.
Here.
Diaz.
Here.
Whitlatch.
Here.
Filiano.
Here.
Norman.
Here.
Aguilar.
Here.
Please stand and join me in the salute to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, good morning again, and this is the public comment time. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on our agenda. Under state law, matters presented in this item cannot be discussed or acted upon by the Planning Commission at this time. For items appearing on the agenda, public will be invited to comment at the time comes up for Planning Commission consideration. So that all interested parties have opportunity to speak. Any person addressing the Planning Commission may be limited at the discretion of the chair as to how long you speak. In order to be considered by the Planning Commission, uh, boy, in order to be considered by Planning Commission, testimony on public hearing items must be given at the time scheduled for the public hearing. At all times, use the microphone and give us your name and address for the record. So anyone who'd like to come forward and comment on anything that's not on our agenda, we'd like to invite you to come up this time to make these comments. Seeing none, we'll move right along to approval of the minutes. Do I have a motion for my fellow commissioners on approval of the last minutes?
I just wanted to make a minor correction, and it was something that I said, so. It was the meeting for the CCPCA conference, which is actually October 11th and 12th. It adjourns at midday on the 12th, so the 13th's not necessarily on there.
Okay, we'll show that as corrected. Can you make a motion to?
And I'll make that motion to approve the minutes, that's correct.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Okay, we have two seconds.
Gong. Gong. Millies.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Diaz. Whitlatch.
Yes.
Filiano. Norman.
Yes.
Aguilar.
Do I vote because they abstained, or what?
You can vote.
You can vote.
Yes.
Okay, we're gonna do a little agenda shifting here, and we're going to go to item five, five. This is parcel map, public hearings. And we're gonna go to five A, attended parcel map, PPM 13-019. Daryl Nicholson and James Whitten and Associates, and, uh, and our staff person, uh, there is no presentation, okay. So it's a categorical exemption, ten mapped, allow a division of 1.3 acres into three parcels. And you can read what the sizes are. This is located north of Crabtree Avenue in Porterville. So, uh, do you open the public, I guess we can open the public. I can open the public hearing, is there anybody like to comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and move on to my fellow commissioners. For your pleasure, someone like to make a motion to approve the categorical exemption consistent with California SEQA?
I would move for approval of the categorical exemption consistent with SEQA, state qualification title 14, PPM 13-019.
Roll call.
Second the motion.
Gong.
Yes.
Millies.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Diaz. Whitlatch.
Yes.
Filiano. Norman.
Yes.
Okay, we're gonna go back to items four A and four B. And I have to recuse myself on both items. I'm gonna go in the back and take a nap. Here, George, Ed.
Thank you.
Okay.
That's what we said.
Charlotte.
Okay. Thank you.
Public hearing, item four A, special use permit number PSP.
Pardon me? Yeah, I got that.
To modify the days and hours of operation of an agricultural service established in the E20 zone. Sites located on Road 196, on the east side of, uh, this is continued from July 4th, 2013.
Thank you very much, good morning commissioners, Charlotte Roswell, RMA Planning Branch. As just stated by Commissioner Diaz, this project was originally heard by your commission on July 24th. At that meeting were comments made in opposition to this project. Therefore, the project was continued to August 28th in order to allow staff the time to meet with the interested parties to work out the issues and concerns that were stated. I can say that we've had three meetings. The first meeting was on August 8th. The assistant director and staff met with Mr., with Ms. Jenkins and Sean and Katrina Higgins to discuss the issues, which resulted in a specific list of issues and concerns that they wanted to address. On August 14th, the assistant director and staff met with Mr. Brown, the attorney representing the Willets Equipment Company. Also in attendance were Ken and Cindy Williams, the Willets owner and operator, and Jean Jones, the, I believe, the property owner. Discussion ensued regarding the list of concerns as stated by Ms. Jenkins at the July 23rd meeting. A follow-up letter was made, was received from Mr. Brown in response to this meeting as well. On August 26th, staff and met with Mr. Brown, Ken and Cindy Williams, Shaney Jenkins, and Sean and Katrina Higgins to again discuss the issues and resolve the remaining concerns. Specific issues were discussed and recommended, conditions of approval were drafted to address each of the points. And I must say that both parties came together amiably and worked out the issues through discussion, and, and we're here today. In regards to the months, days, and times of operation, including Saturdays and emergency operations, condition number 21 of your draft resolution will be revised to read, the days and hours of operation shall be seasonal. November through February, Monday through Friday will be seven to five, 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM. March through October, Monday through Friday will be 6:00 PM to 6:00, 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Saturdays will be 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM every other Saturday. And that is specifically for washing their vehicles, their trucks, and general maintenance, oil changes, tire removal, that kind of thing. And then Saturdays from 8:00 to 2:00, they will have an open shop on Saturdays only. The west shop door will be open during the 8:00 to 2:00 hours. This will minimize the noise to the adjacent neighbors. And emergency services will be 24 hours per day, seven days a week. Also, Monday through Friday, the shop will not open before 7:00 AM. No forklift will be used to the south side until 7:00 AM. And the south side staging area should not be used until 7:00 AM. The forklift, the, these provisions, of course, do not, are not applicable to the emergency situations. Condition number 19 of the draft resolution was revised to read, the trees that have been already planted along the fence for the Willets Equipment Company will be maintained in order to provide aesthetic view for the adjacent property owners. Also, Fautina shrubs will be provided for planting along the south side of the southern fence in order to provide a line of shrubs running from the length of the northern property line to the Higgins property, to the Higgins property line. The applicant will provide and plant the shrubs and provide, will provide five gallon Fautina shrubs to be, to support the planting of shrubs approximately five feet apart. The applicant shall be responsible for the planting of the shrubs, but not be responsible for the maintenance of those shrubs. The neighbors will also have input as to the selection of the Fautinia shrubs. Also, the Tankersley's, I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly, who are located adjacent to this, on the south side of the property and next to the Mr. and Mrs. Higgins, will also be provided shrubs if they request, make that request in writing, 30 days within, within the approval date of this project. The shrubs will be provided for the Tankersley's, but they will not be planted by Willets nor maintained. Willets will however, provide a water line to those shrubs if requested. In regards to emergency calls, logs, and reporting to RMA, this is a new condition that has been added. The applicant shall provide a monthly report to the county commencing December 1, 2013, and terminating November 1, 2014. Said report shall identify the emergency events, when the calls were occurred, occurred daytime, and the nature of the emergency that caused the use of the facility outside the normal working hours. The monthly reporting periods shall cease at the end of one year unless incidents and/or complaints are reported whereby the Planning Commission has the authority to extend the reporting period if deemed necessary. A copy of that, copy of that report shall also be provided to Mr. and Mrs. Higgins via US mail, as long as they reside at that location.
Should that read November 30th then, if it's one year, instead of November 1st?
Uh, that was negotiated, the date was negotiated by both parties, and they went from December 1 to November 1.
That's 11 months then.
Mm-hmm. The term emergency shall be defined as a pump that is not working to produce sufficient water necessary to avoid hardships for the farmers. Draft conditions of approval number 22, 24, and 25 shall be deleted. And that brings us to the, unless you have any questions, that brings us to the recommendation for this project. Staff is recommending that your commission approve the general rule exemption consistent with SEQA and approve special use permit PSP 13-017 to include the modified and/or new conditions as stated. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. The applicant, I believe, is also, and the opponents are also in the audience. Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, may I say one other thing? We did receive a letter today, and it's from the Tankersley's. The residents located south of the subject site. They are also opposing the project due to the noise, the forklifts, personnel using profanity out loud, and the aesthetics as well. So, we feel that these issues have been addressed with the new conditions. Uh, no, actually that did not come up in, in the meeting with Mr. and Mrs. Higgins and Mr. and Mrs. Williams.
That seemed to be a big issue at the last session.
I believe though, that they did, the applicants did speak to their workers, and they have put up signs indicating quiet areas on that side of the yard. So they, hopefully that will take care of that issue.
Good morning commissioners. Christopher Brown, I'm with Dowling Aaron, and I'm here on behalf of Willets Equipment Company for the amended special use permit. I want to first thank staff, they did an excellent job at facilitating the agreements between the parties. We came to a joint agreement that we all think we can live with. I do want to, since you had just spoken with respect to the language, the client has taken steps, they have talked into staff, and as far as we know, that has been taken care of. There are, trying to find, I think in the letter that I had submitted earlier, there is a large photo. Shows the south line, you can see there's a huge quiet sign. Staff is reminded, if there's ever profanity, to keep their voice down, to not use profanity. And as far as we know, there hasn't been any complaints since they have talked to them, so we believe that's been handled. I also have letters in support. I'm not gonna go through those, but I'll submit them, they're the originals, from probably over 25 people that rely on their services, one being a neighbor. They do provide a vital service when, especially in drought conditions, in providing water to this community. So I'll just put those up here, and those can be submitted. I'm not gonna belabor this, because we have come to agreement, if there is opposition later, then probably my client will come up. Parties that are here to speak on behalf of my client will also come up, but I don't think we, we need to go through that. But I do want to emphasize that this is an ag zone, this is an ag use, it belongs there. Residential use solely for residential purpose really doesn't belong in that area. But with that being said, we've made concessions. My client, I think, has gone past my recommendations with respect to use of the property on Saturday. I don't know of any ag service or farm during the height of the season is not out there on Saturdays. And my client's been restricted to washing trucks, doing maintenance on those trucks, and some inside activities. And even the washing of the trucks and maintenance is done every other weekend. So I think, there's no question this hurts my client's business, there's no question it's costing my client a lot of money to produce five gallon Fautinas, plant them five feet apart, just in front of, I believe, the Higgins property, 600 feet. Has gone way beyond, I think, most people would do. And, and there's no question that these conditions do hurt his business, but he's willing to make those concessions. With that, I respectfully submit their application, I'm open to questions, my client's open to questions. As I said, we do have other people that are willing to speak to this, but hopefully that won't be necessary. I thank you.
Assuming that you're in agreement then with all these commissioners.
Yes, we are in agreement. Thank you.
Anybody else? Please give us your name and address for the, for the record.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Shaney Jenkins, I am the attorney representing Sean and Katrina Higgins, who live next door to Willets at 30480 Route 196 in Exeter. First, I want to thank the commission, I want to thank Mr. Spata, as well as the representatives from Resource Management Agency, who allowed the Higgins and other neighbors to have the opportunity to be heard on this special use permit and the amendments to it. The Higginses truly negotiated this permit and the amendments to it in good faith. They are relying on the county, the commission, as well as Willets to follow through with the agreed upon terms and conditions of the special use permit. Needless to say, based on their prior experience, they are a bit nervous. They are, they do have their doubts. This process has not been enjoyable for them at all. Through every step of the way, it has seemed to them that the preference has been for business over that of small property owners. They feel as if they have been seen as the bad guys in this situation, a handful of neighbors who are complaining about a little bit of noise. And they didn't ask for this, they didn't ask to be live next door to a business, and they didn't ask to have their property values decrease as a result of a business moving in next door. When they moved in next, when they moved into the area, there was nothing but orchards surrounding them. And it was quiet, and they enjoyed it. They didn't have to hear trucks running, forklifts backing up, air compressors going off 24 hours a day, seven days a week, et cetera, et cetera. With the prior permit, they have reason to be a little bit skeptical. The terms of the special use permit provided that Willets was supposed to begin work at 7:00 AM, they routinely began work at 5:00 AM every day. Willets admits to this, they're a busy business, they have a lot to do, and they understand that. Although the prior use permit did not allow for work on Saturdays at all, Willets admittedly worked on Saturday, every Saturday from 6:00 AM to 2:00 PM. So it's with trepidation that the Higginses attempted to negotiate the current terms. And really, the Higginses want nothing more to get along with Willets and to have a good neighborly relationship. They understand that Willets has a business to run, Mr. Higgins is a businessman himself, he completely understands that. However, they do hope that Willets continues in the spirit of cooperation and abides by the terms set forth in the newly suggested permit. The Higginses feel like they made a lot of sacrifices in negotiating this new permit. But they were afraid if they did not negotiate, that the terms would just be adopted, and they would have no say. So they didn't, they did get involved in the process. They did want the hours to remain, that the business begin operations at 7:00 AM. However, they did negotiate that 6:00 AM would be an appropriate time. They did want a cinder block wall in between the, the business and their, their property. However, they were told this would be too costly, so they agreed to have the, the bushes planted, the shrubbery planted, and hopefully that will help not only with the aesthetics, but as well as the noise. They didn't want any work on Saturdays at all, they just wanted two days of peace. And thankfully, Willets did agree to every other weekend in doing the work outside. But still, Saturday work will begin. Willets did agree to begin work on Saturdays at 8:00 AM, which will be a help to them. In regard to what is going to occur on Saturdays, it was Mr. Higgins's understanding that it was going to be washing of the trucks only. I do recall a mention of some light maintenance on the trucks. So I do want to voice his concern that he was under the understanding that it was only gonna be a washing of the trucks and didn't understand that there would be light maintenance. So we're asking Willets to keep the noise down and possibly keep it on the north side of the business. As part of the new permit, Willets is to provide monthly reports regarding the work that occurs beyond the agreed upon hours. The subject of emergency and what constitutes emergency was actually debated by all parties. It was determined that an emergency was when a customer's pump was not working to provide sufficient water. We did prefer terms be added such as the use of, there was imminent danger to the crops or substantial harm to the business. However, we were told that Willets wouldn't be out there doing work after hours unless it was an emergency. We understand that, but at the same time, they are getting paid emergency rates as well. Excuse me. The, the point of all this is that the Higginses are really hopeful that Willets is committed to the conditions they agreed upon. They are hopeful that Mr. and Mr. Willi, Mr. and Mrs. Williams are true to their word, and they'll be good neighbors, and the Higginses intend to do the same. They hope that one day in the spirit of cooperation, they will be invited to the annual open house at Willets, and they can really open communications between both sides. They hope that they have the type of relationship that if something is bothering them that's going on, that they can actually just go to Willets and let them know without having to involve a third party, without having to involve the county or anybody like that. And they hope that Willets will do their best to accommodate them. A good way to begin that spirit of cooperation is to adhere to the terms set forth in the newly amended special use permit. However, the Higginses also request the county hold Willets to the terms and conditions of this permit. If there are violations, the county must enforce the terms of the permit. If there's a blanket disregard for the terms, the county must enforce the terms. If the county does not do so, then what's the point of this exercise? What real power does the Planning Commission have if the businesses don't follow the terms set forth in the permits? And I know that Mr. Spata also is going to agree with that, because he has provided his personal email address to the Willets, and he will hear of if any violations occur. Again, we're hopeful that there won't be any emails between them. That being said, the Higginses anticipate cooperation from Willets and the county, and hope from this beyond, this point on, a new beginning is had. If I may clarify one thing, I think it was the intent of all parties that the reporting period be a full year. I know it said November 1st, 2014 in the permit, I would ask that it be extended to November 30th. It was supposed to be a, a full year of reporting, not 11 months. If that amendment can be made, I don't think Mr. Brown, but certainly he can speak for himself, will have any objections to that. And again, on behalf of the Higginses, we thank you for the opportunity to be heard. I, I do believe Mr. Tankersley's here as well. Yes, I think he wanted to make some comments. He's not sure now.
I'm Brett Tankersley. We live Route 196, just to the south of Willets. And we appreciate the bushes, it's gonna help a lot, and if you can just keep down the, the bad language and stuff. That's all I have to say.
Just real quick, this is Christopher Brown, Dowling Aaron, 78080 North Palm Avenue, third floor, Fresno, California. We're okay with extending it to November 30th, 2014 for the reporting period, so that is fine with us. I understand what council is indicating, I think, I think part of the problem, and I think staff recognizes it, is if there is a complaint, they really can pick up the phone and call Ken Williams, they don't need to call. If there's profanity, obviously it's nice if they would call Ken immediately, Ken can go out to the yard, he's, he's there at 6 o'clock in the morning. He can address it immediately, and he will. It doesn't really help the situation, whether you're, you're trying to manage employees, or children, or dogs, is to report something, and then Ken doesn't find out about it to a day, a week later. It's very hard to address it, so. Dealt with Ken a lot, he's very open, all they have to do is call him up, leave a message. Not saying they can't report it to the county, but, you know, bringing in that type of force doesn't add to any coexistence or peace between parties. It's better to communicate directly.
The signage was expanded to include no profanity, if anybody understands that in the sign itself?
I think it's, it's gone down.
Head off having to police that constantly?
We can, he can change the sign, he can say quiet, no profanity.
If it's out there in front of everybody, they see it and they go, I just have to be careful.
Yeah, the quiet zone was also meant because if they were picking up a piece, to know they shouldn't just drop it on the ground and make a lot of noise, but the profanity, it can be added, no profanity, or foul language, or something of that nature. They can, they can do that.
And a sign is only as good as its enforcement. I mean, not that I don't obey and drive 55, but I know that other people don't.
Well, it's a thought, it's a thought provoker, that's all I think.
No, it's like a scarecrow, and I think the point is, it's, it's hard to manage, I mean, you have a lot of staff, they're working in that industry, they're working in 110 degree weather. You can understand sometimes that something slips. And the, the point is, I think Ken has addressed that, he's, he's hammered his, his employees with that. But it would be helpful to receive the call going to him immediately, instead of hearing about it a week later. And if there's any questions, I would be happy to. Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Can you hear me now? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be brief. First, I wanted to thank the project applicant, the Willetts, and I also want to thank the neighbors, the Higgins, because not only did they take their time to participate in meetings, I know by participating myself in the meetings, that they expressed both their good faith, their cooperation, and their professionalism in conducting the meetings in a very businesslike manner. I also want to thank the council, very able council, on both sides that participated extensively with regard to this. I would also like to thank both Charlotte Presuelas, the acting chief, as well as senior planner, Eric, Aaron Bach. If ever two people could be characterized as closers, they closed it. Before the meeting started, the final meeting, I said, "Don't let them out unless this deal is done," and the deal was done. This was a model in dispute resolution, where two sides were vigorously dug in, and now we've reached a settlement which, which staff strongly recommends for approval. Now, we also believe that there are adequate controls with regard to this amendment to the use permit, and, and counsel for the Higgins is correct. I have given my business card and email, if there's any problem, they're emailing me directly, we'll send an inspector out. If, if there is a violation, a notice of violation will be sent out, and the process will begin. We are very hopeful, however, that that won't happen, and I think the suggestion of counsel for the, for the applicant is something we would respectfully suggest to the Higgins that, "Don't call us first, try to work it out with the property." You're not required to do that, but we think, in terms of trying to build a harmonious relationship between a business interest and a residential interest, you should try to the best that you can to develop that relationship. But, gets to the point whereby there are violations of the conditions, the county will take swift and effective action. However, we believe that through these negotiations, that that will not occur, but we're prepared to do what's necessary. As a result, I cannot strongly recommend this because the parties came together, and this was a successful negotiation. Thank you.
Looks good to go.
Make a motion to approve general, general rule exemption consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act and the State SEQA guidelines. Section 15061b, three, general rule exemption and conditionally approve the special use permit number PSP 13-017.
I'll second.
Gong.
Dane.
Ellis.
Yes.
Elliott.
Yes.
Diaz.
Norman.
Yes.
Aguilar.
Yes, did you need to have the 30, the November 30 date on there though, for the correction?
Staff, staff recommended that, yes. For clarification, the, the period, reporting period was extended to November 30th. Does the commission concur with that?
Yes.
Not through with the roll call, we haven't all voted.
Yeah, I was the last one.
Oh, okay.
So could you announce the vote, please?
Pilianno motioned, and Elliott second.
And it was unanimous, correct? Thank you.
One extension.
One extension.
I, Dane, I did, okay, your first part, thank you.
Good luck.
So, I believe, Mr. Whitlatch accused himself on item 4B as well, so we'll just move right on to 4B.
He's asleep.
For the second for the.
Okay, item 4B, on the continuing hearing, special use permit 13-019, The Grape Guys, Matthew Graham. This is a category agricultural use, sales and marketing fresh fruit, on a one acre parcel in an 80/20 zone, located on the west side of Shirk Road, approximately 1,883 feet north of State Route 198, West of Visalia. This was continued from July 24th, 2013.
Good morning, Chairman, Deas and Commissioners, Scott Cochran, project planner for special use permit 13-019. As I mentioned, this project was continued in order to provide staff the opportunity to respond to comments received by Mr. Sean Ricks, President of The Grape Guys, in regards to conditions number 17 and 19. Condition of approval 17 reads, "Prior to recordation of special use permit, the applicant shall improve the parking area and driveways with asphalt, concrete, and aggregate base consistent with the City of Visalia standards." On August 1st, 2013, the applicant met with Charlotte Presuelas, acting chief planner, and Scott Cochran, project planner. The applicant was instructed that since this project was within the Visalia urban development boundary, and there is a memorandum of understanding between the county and the City of Visalia, the county will honor the requirement set forth in the condition of approval number 17. The applicant was advised to discuss the situation with the city and report back to what may or may not be revised by the city requirement. On August 13th, the applicant met with Brandon Smith, senior planner with the City of Visalia. Following that, the applicant contacted staff on August 14th and informed staff that the city was adamant about the condition. The applicant said he would seek bids, although it may be cost prohibitive to satisfy the condition report back. The other condition of approval, condition number 19, requires any new sewage disposal system shall be designed by an engineer registered, or by competent persons, all of whom must be registered or licensed professionals. Again, this, this condition only applies to new sewage disposal systems, and the applicants are not applying for a new system, nor are they required to build a new system. And with that, concludes my report on the update.
My name is Sean Ricks, and my address is 409 North Shirk, Visalia. I am the president of The Grape Guys, and we have met with staff and with the city, as Scott pointed out. When we were here before, there was some concern, I was reticent about the requirement for paving the parking lot, I primarily, I felt it was burdensome, but at the time, I also wasn't clear as to where that burden would fall, whether it would fall on the tenant, which is myself, or the landlord. I'm still trying to get clarification on that, but as I understand it, most recently, it's been recognized by the landlord that they would, that he would bear the cost. So as I stand here today, that's my understanding. And if that's the case, although I, I think it's, it's, it's a little burdensome for that property for now, given the surface that we already have down there, if the landlord is in fact prepared to incur the cost of paving and parking, then obviously, we wouldn't have objection to that. The objection to the septic concern, as Scott pointed out, I think really doesn't apply because we're not, there's no, there's no need, the septic system there is new, so while I think the landlord objects, would object to a new, a new design, I think is understanding, I think, I think he misunderstood, I think that the fact that we're not required, needing a new septic system would, would allow that to be no issue, so. As I understand it, the landlord has agreed to bear the cost, so I, we have no objections to that.
Mr. Chairman, let me, let me make some clarification, I'm looking at the resolution, just to be clear here, and condition number 17, on page five, indicates, "Prior to recordation of special use permit 13-019, the applicant shall improve the parking areas and driveways with asphalt, concrete, and an aggregate base consistent with City of Visalia standards." Now, the way it reads it here, the applicant has the requirement of doing that. If he's got a negotiated deal with the landlord to make the improvement, that's fine, but it's the applicant that has the responsibility under the use permit, so if that condition is not carried out, then we have to appropriately take action, so we need clarification from the applicant that he understands that.
Thank you. Yeah, I do understand that. I, I guess I would ask that I be given a little more time to get clear, because I only this morning learned that the landlord has agreed to incur the cost, so I have not been able to, to hear that firsthand from the landlord. But, you know, as I, as I said, if he's willing to do it, obviously, I have no issue. If he's not willing to do it, then I would need to consider what my options are. I, the requirement to pave that, that parking is, in my opinion, burdensome, it's an enormous parking area. We, we put down a asphalt grinding three-inch base when we moved in at our expense, there is no dust, we only have four or five cars coming into the lot every day. So I understand the city's desire to be uniform, but I guess I would have some more consideration on the issue. I do understand what you're saying, and I guess I would just ask, let me get confirmation from the landlord.
All right, all right, thank you. There, I believe there will be additional testimony today, and the matter may be continued anyway for a different reason, however, let me just say, normally, it is the applicant that is responsible for the conditions, it would strike me that that would be a matter as between landlord and tenant with respect to who's going to install the improvements. So that would be a private matter, not a public matter that's associated with the permit. But I understand you need clarification, but, so you understand, this is a public entitlement, so we have to look to the applicant who applied for that entitlement, but you can make whatever private agreement you want as between landlord and tenant.
I understand. I honestly, if I had known this was going to be, it was going to come to this, we would never have moved in there. It's really been a much bigger headache for everyone, and honest, I would, I kind of wish I'd just left the property, sit where it was, and just repair, instead of doing what I have done, which is spend a significant amount of money on a property that I don't own. I've not been accused of being the smartest businessman, but anyway, I just, I'm on the spot where I'm not sure I'm interested in spending a lot more money. If it's on me, then I, I have to rethink it. If, if he is willing, which I have just learned this morning, that I understand he is, then obviously, we would go forward, so.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Josh McDonald, I'm the city planner for the City of Visalia, 315 East Asequia, here in Visalia. First, thank you very much to the commission for allowing me to speak today, and, and second, thank you very much to staff. This is an example of the City of Visalia and the county working very well together since the MOU between the city and the county has been adopted. The way that this process is now working is that if the county receives a, an application that is located within the county, or the city sphere of influence, then the county refers that application to the city for review and comment. That absolutely happened in this case, and we're very grateful for it. In this particular case, the, the city received from staff that referral in, I believe it was April, March or April, and at the time, the city thought that what was being applied for was a produce stand, which obviously, it turns out, isn't the case. What the city understood from the application materials at the time was that it was, you know, more of a, the types of stands that we see on the sides of the roads that, that sell produce directly to customers who drive up. With that understanding, the city asked the county to include a condition of approval that would require the parking lot improvements to be improved to city standards. And once again, thank you to county staff, they absolutely did that, in keeping with the, the memorandum of understanding that the two have, so, so far, we're looking great. Unfortunately, when your commission continued the item and asked the applicant to work with the city in order to negotiate this condition that the applicant was, was having some trepidation about, the city, at that meeting, gained more understanding of what was actually being suggested for this site, and it turns out that it's more of an office type of use. It's a produce brokerage and an agricultural marketing office. In this, in the city's agricultural zoning district, that type of office use isn't necessarily allowed in the city's zoning district, so it, it caused us to pause for a moment and, and want to rethink how the city's approach to this particular project would be. That was a great big wind-up for a request from the city to continue the item for a month in, in an effort to work with the project applicant, with county staff, and to go back to the city council to discuss whether or not, number one, the, the project site should be considered for annexation purposes. If, if this is more of an urbanized use, then perhaps annexation would, would be an appropriate path. This is the city's request, once again, for continuation for a period of perhaps a month and a half would be sufficient time for city staff to go back to the city council, request direction from then, and then, of course, work with the project applicant, work with county staff to develop an approach based on this information. Thank you very much, and of course, available to answer any questions you may have. It certainly doesn't seem very efficient, and, and, and that's a question that, that's the exact question that we would like to ask to the city council, quite frankly. In this particular case, there appears to be some small justification because it is more of an urbanized use. Certainly not unusual for the county. For the city's sphere of influence, something like this, it is more unusual. That's the beauty of the memorandum of understanding that appears to be working so very well, quite frankly, is that these projects are being referred to the city, so, and unfortunately, we, we didn't quite understand the use the first time around, but the second time around, had the opportunity to understand really what is being proposed here, and, and based on that information, would like to formulate a more appropriate response for your consideration. Thank you.
Mr. Ricks, would I make a rebuttal, will you allow one?
Thank you. I just, just to be clear with, with Josh, because I, I may not have been as clear as I could have been when we met, but I was perfectly clear when we first proposed moving in here. We do farm about 1,200 acres. The acreage is an early mark, but our farming office is in this building. We also do our ag marketing out of there, too, we sell our own products. So, at the time, when there was the first discussions, what were, you know, are we, are we, are we here appropriately, and we felt like we were, and we were told that we, we probably were, that we were, but there was, that there was a process that we would need to go through to be, to get that confirmed. So I just want to make clear that, that we, we do farm out of this office, it's about 1,200 acres, I just wanted to make that clear. twelve hundred acres, I just wanted to make that clear.
Comment, Mr. Chairman? Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. In light of the testimony that was provided today, staff would respectfully suggest a thirty-day continuance for two reasons, number one, to give the applicant the opportunity to confer with his landlord, to see if they can work out any arrangement concerning the improvement of the parking lot. In addition, to continue to allow the city an opportunity to explore annexation or any other issue that they are concerned. I'd only make this request, though, I would request that, that the city work with staff early rather than later, so that we're not discussing this, you know, the week of the next continuance, so that we can try to formulate a position with regard to entitlement as well as annexation, rather than just leave this project in limbo, because it has been going on a long time, and we'd like to bring this to closure. Thank you.
We can make a date, make a date specific for September twenty-fifth?
Are we doing September twenty-fifth, that's three days short under the thirty days, or do you want October ninth?
Is October ninth or September twenty-fifth preferable to the applicant and the city representative?
Speaking on behalf of the city, October ninth would be preferable, because I can't get it on the city's agenda, the city council's agenda, until the third Monday in September, which, after I get that direction from the city, I can immediately go back to county staff, so there, there would be a little bit of lag there, purely because of city council agenda.
And the applicant? October ninth is suggested.
I'll make that motion for, to continue this matter to October ninth.
Go call?
Gong?
Yes.
Elise?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Pilianno?
Yes.
Foreman?
Yes.
Aguilar?
Yes.
Be noticed at the end, so the date is October ninth, right?
Great job, you can keep the gavel.
Okay, we're gonna go to five or six A, final site plan, PSR one-three dash zero-zero-four, Jose Trevino, and the project is Avenue four thirteen, approximately four hundred feet west of Road one-twenty-eight, in the community of Orozco, and Dana, good morning.
Good morning. As mentioned, the item before you is a general rule exemption and a final site plan for an eighteen-unit apartment complex, and the R three is a multiple-family zone in the community of Orozco. The project is consistent with Title fourteen California Code Regulation, Section one-five-zero-six-one-B-three, pertaining to the general rule exemption because of notice of exemption, and the attached discussion indicated that the project would not have a significant effect on the environment. Entitlement for this project is found in Section eight-A-two of Ordinance number three-fifty-two, which allows multiple drawings in the R three zone, provided that if more than four dwelling units are proposed to be constructed on one lot, the construction of such units shall be subject to approval of a site plan. The site in this area, located on the south side of Avenue four thirteen, approximately four hundred feet west of State Route sixty-three, in the community of Orozco. The one-acre site is zoned R three, which is a residential multiple-family zone, and contains two single-family residences on the northern portion. The property to the north is Zoned C-two and R-three, and contains an eighty-unit apartment complex and post office, the property to the east is Zoned C-two-S-R, and contains single-family residences and commercial businesses as you get closer to SR sixty-three. The properties to the west and south are zoned R-three, and contain single-family residences and a small apartment, apartment complex, and this proposal is consistent with zoning. And again, another view of the site here. The proposal is consistent with the general plan update twenty-thirty and the Cutler-Orozco Community Plan, site plan. The project will consist of three two-story buildings, located here, here, and here. This is the location of the two single-family residences that will remain on the property, and this is a portion of a garage that's existing and will be removed in order to widen the driveway for access to the parking lot. Each of these buildings contains six units, three on the first floor and three on the second floor, each apartment will be approximately seven-hundred-and-fifty square feet. The proposal is in compliance with the applicable development standards, lot area per family, yard areas, signage, parking, lighting, waste collection, and landscaping. And another aerial view of the site here. This project was noticed according to the law. And staff is recommending that your commission approve a general rule exemption consistent with SEQUA, and conditionally approve final site plan number PSR thirteen dash zero-zero-four. And subject to any questions you may have, that is the end of staff's report, thank you.
Thank you. If we don't have any questions, we're gonna move to the public testimony. At this time, we'll have members of the public come forward and give testimony, we usually start with an applicant, if you would like to say something, you don't have to, looks fairly clear to me, and I will give you a chance if someone comes up and says something that they don't like about your project. So, is there anyone here that's against the project? Is there anyone here that's for the project and against it both? Okay. Hearing now to close the public testimony, and we have a summation, I guess, already, right Dana?
Correct.
Your, I know what your recommendation is, and staff's recommending that we approve this, so close the public testimony, I go to my fellow commissioners for any discussion or make a motion to approve, subject modifications as discussed by the planning commission.
I'm willing to approve this project and the, the SEQUA, and, and conditionally approve the final site plan.
As this goes to supervisors, have a second, please?
I'd second that.
Can we have a second, roll call?
Gong?
Yes.
Elise?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
Yes? Whitlatch?
Yes.
Pilianno?
Yes.
Enorman?
Yes.
Going to item six B, zone change, number PC one-three dash zero-zero-four, Family Healthcare Network slash BJ Construction is a representative, a zone change on approximately a twenty-one-thousand square foot portion of the property, zoning designated for two family residences, the site is located east side of Road two-thirty-eight, approximately three-hundred-and-thirty feet north of Avenue ninety-five in Terabilla, in the, in the community of Terabilla, and Chuck, can't say your last name, too many.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Chuck Przybalski, a planner with the Planning Division of Resource Management Agency, and as the chairman just discussed, today is a zone change for a medical center in the community of Terabilla. The size of the parcel in question is twenty-one thousand square feet, it is right now zoned R-two for two family zone, the applicant is Healthcare Network, they want to build and construct a healthcare clinic on school property, and they have a lease with the school district to build the clinic on that site at the moment. Currently, the site is located just south of Porterville in the community of Terabilla. It is also, this is the land use map for the community itself, it's within the urban boundary, as all the color shows, it is, the land use designation is public, quasi-public, as you know, the zone is R-two. During the Terabilla Community Plan that was adopted in two thousand and two, land use was adopted for the community as public, quasi-public because of the school. However, school districts don't necessarily have to change zones to operate their schools, so, school district never re-zoned the property to be a public, quasi-public property, and that's why we are here today to re-zone the medical center from R-two to, opens, office, professional office, sorry. This shows the site in the community itself, to the west of the site is single-family residences, to the north is a church operation, to the south is the school district and the school playground areas, and to the east is actually dry gulch that runs kinda through here, and it drops off pretty, pretty good. Yes, it is the, part of the parcel is within the one-hundred-year flood zone, and I'll get to this later, but specifically, engineering requested that they build elevation above, which the applicant did denote on the site plan, to build above that elevation thereby, fulfilling the requirements of him. The applicant proposes to construct a approximately four-thousand-square-foot medical facility on school district ground. The clinic will operate Monday through Friday from ten to seven PM, and Saturday from eight to five PM, and they anticipate approximately sixteen employees and about forty-five customers per day. This is a picture of the site plan itself, this is Third Street, Magnolia, this is the parking area, which contains twenty-two parking area spaces, and this would be the facility itself, containing the, the doctor's offices and the, and the staff support. This is a site looking west from the gulch itself, onto the property, it's completely fenced off and vacant, or as a school facility playground. This is looking from the church site, directly onto the project site again, and it's used as a playground facility. General plan consistency, this would actually be consistent with the general plan, twenty-thirty update, a medical facility would be considered smart growth and healthy for the community, the land use designation of public, quasi-public would be consistent, as a clinic would be consistent with that definition, in the Terabilla Community Plan and the general plan, this would be considered a public activity center, this would be considered infill development, and as a joint-use facility, clinic and helping schoolchildren, it would be considered joint That's what I hope for, thanks. Back in two thousand, in the Terabilla Community Plan, they adopted a final environmental impact report that discussed the cumulative impacts of the entire Terabilla Community Plan, and they discussed many impacts, and it was adopted in December two thousand and two. For this particular project specific, we proposed a categorical exemption because the building is less than ten thousand square, and it would fit under Section fifteen-three-oh-three-C, which is commercial buildings under ten thousand square feet in an urban area, which this is mostly surrounded by urban uses. Water and sewer for the facility, the Terabilla Irrigation District has provided will serve a letter to serve the project, the sewer maintenance district, which is actually the county utility, is working with the applicant to provide service to the project, the wastewater treatment plant does have capacity for the project. Circulation, Road two-thirty-eight, which is Third Street, is classified as a local road, the project would generate approximately sixty trips a day, twenty-two parking spaces are provided onsite, two spaces for disabled persons, our ordinance requires seventeen parking spaces, so this complies with that ordinance also. Medical waste, Health and Human Services Environmental Division requires them to comply with state medical waste laws, and the applicant shall secure a permit for medical waste facility permit with the Environmental Health Division, prior to commencement of the operation. The flood zone, to the east is, the project site is actually located in the AE flood zone, which is the hundred-year flood zone, and in speaking with engineering, compliance for this is to elevate the building above the flood zone, and the site plan actually shows the elevation line and construction of the building above those, compliance with Tulare County Engineering. The species of concern, they're in the Terabilla Community Plan, there is no species of concern located on the site. There is a kit fox sighting about a quarter-mile away, the sighting was in nineteen seventy-five. I conducted a reconnaissance of the site, as you saw from the pictures, we saw some cat footprints, but there was no animals other than domestic animals on the site. The site is surrounded on three sides by urban uses, the only where, spot that they can do would be to use the canal, and they're not, the destruction is not gonna be inside the canal, not the canal, I'm sorry. No public comments have been received, we did notify Fish and Game about the, the fox, and nothing was received by any public entity or agency or persons. The timeline of this, we received the application on July seventeenth, we're at the planning commission August twenty-eighth, and September tenth, we expect the first reading before the board of supervisors, and the actual public hearing before the board on September twenty-fourth, so from start to finish, we're looking at about two months for this particular The recommendation to the planning commission, which is one motion, and recommending approval of the exemption of fifteen-three-oh-three-C, commercial, less than ten thousand square feet, as in compliance with SEQUA, and recommend approval of the, of zone change to the board supervisors. As this is a zone change, the board supervisors will make the final decision project. And this concludes staff reports, I will take any questions that you may have on the project, and the applicants are here also, in attendance.
So, do you have any questions? If not, I'll open the public hearing and take public testimony, and then maybe they can answer any questions, anyone like to come forward this time, the applicant, and speak? Is there anyone here that's opposed to the project? Is there anybody else here that's opposed or against the project? So, seeing none, I will close the public testimony and go to the staff's recommendation, which was, refer this to the board of supervisors, and we approve categorical exemption, and someone would like to make that motion, please?
I would, but seventy-five is last kit fox sighting, Fred Lynn was a rookie with the Boston Red Sox that year, Fred Lynn's been out of baseball for twenty years, twenty-five years.
That's pretty subjective there.
Good record-keeping, so you made that motion, Charlie?
That's a long time ago, yes, I would make that recommendation.
I'll second the motion. Roll call, please?
Gong?
Yes.
Elise?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
Yes? Whitlatch?
Yes.
Pilianno?
Yes.
Foreman?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, may I just make a brief comment about this project, very briefly?
Sure.
First, I really wanna thank the agent as well as the applicant with regard to this, their cooperation throughout this process has been tremendous, their level of expertise contributed a great deal to moving this project very rapidly through the system, and I wanna thank Chuck Przybalski as well for moving this very quickly. Our target, internal target for zone changes is ninety days, we made it in sixty, so this is indicative of how fast we move the projects, and you can see from the packet how thorough the environmental review was done, as well as the project conditions, and there was no opposition. So, all I can say is thanks to staff, as well as to the applicant and the agent, if for no other reason than they're providing a very important healthcare service, much-needed service to the community. So I wanna thank everyone concerned, as well as your commission. So, I want to thank everyone concerned, as well as your commission.
I would, uh, concur that family healthcare for Tulare County does a very important service for the poor, for any healthcare. They do a wonderful job, and, uh, so I think the county of Tulare is very glad that we have them working in our county. So, motion was carried, so we'll move right along to the next item.
Thank you.
This is a big one, huh? A lot of pages, lots of reading. Special use permit PSP 1300-37, comma, zoning variance number PZ13-005, and a tentative parcel map, number PPM 13-024. And this is in the Rich Grove Community Service District. Forster Weber is their representative. And, uh, it's construction of a community park on a vacant land in Rich Grove, on approximately 12 vacant acres, an existing 40-acre parcel. And, uh, there's a parking area, which include a tot lot, children's ADA, accessible playground, picnic areas, um, et cetera, et cetera. And we'll move along to, uh, Dana, good morning again. There's like one, two, three, four things that will approve different motions, is that correct, Dana?
That is correct.
Okay.
Yes, if I may say, there are four motions, members of the commission. Four motions you need to take with regard to.
I got it.
At the end.
I got it.
Okay, uh, again, the projects are for the Rich Grove Community Services District, and they are in order as zone variance, a tentative parcel map, and a special use permit to allow the construction of a public park in Rich Grove. Pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act, the initial study that was prepared for the project identified potentially significant effects. But revisions to the project, which have been agreed to by the applicant and implemented through the initiation of a mitigated mitigation monitoring and reporting program, will avoid the effects or mitigate the effects to a point where clearly no significant effects would occur. And as such, there is no substantial evidence that the project, as revised, may have a significant effect on the environment.
That was a mouthful, Dana.
Yes.
It may have a significant impact.
Entitlements for these projects are found in ordinance number 352. Section 161A authorizes the filing of variance applications. Section 9.6D authorizes divisions of land in the AE20 zone. And section 162B authorizes the submission of a special use permit application for public park in the AE20 zone. Site is located on the northwest corner of County Line Road, Ames Drive, and Road 210. The urban development boundary of the community of Rich Grove is adjacent to the site on the north and west, and directly south is Kern County. The project site is a 40-acre parcel located in the AE20 zone. The project site has been historically utilized for agriculture and is devoid of any above-ground improvements. The properties to the north and west are zoned R2 and contain residential units. And the properties to the east and south are zoned AE20 and contain agriculture. Aerial view, uh, full notice of non-renewal for the subject site Williamson Act contract became effective January 1, 2006. The anniversary will be January 1, 2015. The zone variance would allow the division of a 40.52-acre parcel of land resulting in the creation of one parcel containing less than the minimum 20 acres required in the AE20 zone. Parcel 1, which is the location of the proposed park, would be 12 acres, and parcel 2 would be 27.04 acres. Then, yes? I've, well, they just wanted 12 acres for the park, to my understanding. The mandatory, mandatory findings for approval of this zone variance, as detailed in the staff report, have been met. The tentative parcel map will allow the division, again, of the 40-acre parcel into two parcels. And, again, parcel 1, 12, and parcel 2 would be 27 acres. A waiver of final parcel map was requested. This proposed parcel map is consistent with section 7-01-2360C of the subdivision ordinance pertaining to any parcel of land which is being divided into two parcels regardless of size, when the original parcel has frontage on an existing public road, and no portion of the parcel is located within urban area boundary of a city or unincorporated area as established by the urban boundaries element of the general plan. Approval of the waiver of final map is recommended. This is a view from the intersection of Ames, Road 210 and County Line, looking northwest. Southwest from the corner of Dooley and Road 210, this would be the northeast corner of the parcel that would be utilized for the park. Another view, looking southeast. And this is the site plan. The special use permit would allow the development of the 12-acre site into a community park in the community of Rich Grove. Pursuant to section 16F, a Real Valley Lands Plan parcel evaluation was performed for the project site. The number of points accumulated was 12. A parcel receiving 12, 13, 14, 15, and 16 points shall be determined to have fallen within a gray area in which no clear-cut decision is readily apparent. In such instances, a planning commission or board shall make a decision based on the unique circumstances pertaining to the particular parcel of land, including factors not covered by the system. And as depicted on the site plan, the park would include picnic areas, a soccer field, baseball and softball field, skate park, a tot lot, basketball courts, volleyball, uh, walking path, restrooms, and parking, also, uh, landscaping. The hours will be 8:00 AM until sunset. And this project is in compliance with the applicable development standards pertaining to access, parking, signage, and setbacks. Project was noticed according to the law. And staff is recommending in four motions.
Four.
First, four. First, we adopt the mitigated negative declaration. And then, we conditionally approve the zone variance. Then, we conditionally approve the tentative parcel map. And then, we conditionally approve the special use permit. And subject to any questions you may have, that concludes staff's report.
Where is this income, uh, in reference to their office, to their community services?
We'll have Mr. Weber come up and... Fred Weber, Mr. Fred Weber.
Open the public, uh, comment portion. Perhaps the applicant would come up and let us know.
I'll open the public hearing at this time, and we'll just take testimony from the applicant's representative, Mr. Fred Weber. I got your name right this time, Fred, you know? Yeah, nope, keep going, we don't want you there, so.
Are you calling him Jim Winton?
Uh, Fred Weber, Forster Weber and Associates, uh, I don't know where their office is. Other than Rich Grove. I do have one question, though, concerning the conditions on the variance. Uh, number seven, uh, no further division of land on parcel 1 and 2. Why not on 2? They could conceivably build a home, split the home out later, and still be within the zoning.
Could you direct our attention to that condition, so I can read it?
Number seven on the zone variances? Page 5.
Uh, we're gonna recommend deleting the condition, and Charlotte, uh, will provide just some brief background to that.
The parcel, the parcel 2 would be large enough to, um, submit an application for a home site parcel, if, if it meets the findings for a home site parcel, or, um, develop a residence on that site. Uh, if, I would have to look at the zoning and look at the site, but, um, and the regulations, but, uh, but a residence could be developed on parcel 2.
We'll eliminate conditions.
And a lot of that explanation, we'd recommend deleting it. And then they could submit an application, and then staff would evaluate and comment on it. So, there shouldn't be a bar to delete the supplemental of the application.
That would be five years down the road, if there were a house even built. Under current conditions, there's, nobody's gonna put an application in for any kind of division. We'd be right back here with another zone variance if there was. But I don't like that restriction stuck on there, because I've got hit with one of these in the past that we couldn't get rid of, so.
There is a logic for the, uh...
There may have been on the last one, but I don't see it here, so I appreciate it being taken. Or if you just took off parcel 2, would be a...
We'd recommend deleting it.
Staff recommended they're gonna delete it, so, anything else, Fred?
Nope, that's it. I concur with all the other stuff on here.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question of Dana. Uh, you said the hours of use for the park, is this park going to be completely fenced?
No. No.
So, then why are there hours of use?
Because, uh, the application requests hours that the, uh, use will be open for public activities. And typically, you know, at sundown, the public parks are not allowed for activities, so, just a fact.
And presumably, it would be posted, and then if anyone violates that condition, they could be subject to enforcement.
Coming from a law enforcement background, sometimes those things help your law enforcement people uh, get rid of bad situations, so. Nobody complains, probably nothing would happen. Anyone else like to come forward and testify, attest, testify? Hey, comment on this project for or against? Seeing none, I will close it and go on to the four items that the staff has recommended we do.
Mr. Chairman, before you go, let me make a brief comment. If you notice here, that there are four specific motions suggesting that this was a very complex, uh, project. And I want to thank the lead planner, Dana Metlin, who worked with the agent in bringing this to closure. As well as, I want to thank the chief environmental planner, Hector Guerra, who prepared the negative declaration and worked very closely with the school district and their representatives to get this project to your commission. If you note, this complex project has a date of 2013. And it's being brought forward with no opposition, very clean project, and a very useful project and helpful project to the public. Thank you.
I kinda wish we had some of those five-year-old projects again.
They're done.
Thank you. Okay, Dana, I will, I think it's fairly clear what we need to do, and if I will, we have four motions. And if, uh, one of my fellow commissioners would like to make the first motion?
I'll make the first motion that we, um, approved the ne- uh, negative, uh, mitigated negative declaration.
I second that.
Roll call.
Gong.
Yes.
Elise.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
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 Whitlatch.
Yes.
Liano.
Yes.
Foreman.
Yes.
Okay, someone like to make the second motion, please?
I'd make the second motion that we approve zone variance PZV 13-005.
As amended.
As amended.
Elise, number 7, condition?
Seconded. Second.
Okay, we have, roll call, please?
Gong.
Yes.
Elise.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Yes. Whitlatch.
Yes.
Liano.
Yes.
Foreman.
Yes.
Hey, someone like to make a motion on the fourth, or?
The third.
The third, right, we're the third. They're numbered different, but anyway, third, okay.
I'll go for that, uh, make a motion on the conditional approval, the tentative parcel map, number PPM 13-024.
Second, please?
Second.
Roll call.
Gong.
Yes.
Elise.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Yes. Whitlatch.
Yes.
Liano.
Yes.
Foreman.
Yes.
Okay, the fourth motion, please?
I move that we approve special use permit number PSP 13-037 and adopt the resolution establishing findings and conditions of approval for the project.
Those conditions of approval, where was the seven we deleted? Was that not?
That's from, that's from the variance, not, not the, uh...
The variance, okay.
Not the use permit.
Yeah, uh, we have a first, or have a second, please?
Second.
Uh, roll call.
Gong.
Yes.
Elise.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
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 Whitlatch.
Yes.
Liano.
Yes.
Foreman.
Yes.
Okay, we're almost at the bottom of the pile here. Okay, we're gonna go to, uh, item 6E, setback variance, PSV 13-001. Jose?
Uh, no, I think we have D on the top of the page.
Did I miss Z? I sure did, okay.
13-002.
Okay, we'll go to D then, please, which is zone change, PZ13-002. Herman Cassidy, representative of Forster and Weber. Then meant to the negative declaration for a zone change at approximately 39.66 acres. Uh, this site's located on a near Venice Hill, a half a mile west of Road 188, a mile south Avenue 336, uh, two miles east the community of Ivanhoe. A very pretty area up by Venice Hill. But we'll open the public hearing and go to the staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Uh, today I'm presenting the zone change, uh, PZ13-002, uh, a zone change from AE80, eighty acre minimum to AE20. Uh, the site is zoned, uh, agricultural, exclusive agriculture, AE, uh, 80 acre minimum. And, uh, the parcel size is, uh, approximately 40 acres, is located within the Rural Valley Lands Plan. The applicant is Herman and Virginia Cassidy. Uh, the project is just to continue farming operations on the site. And I'll explain a little bit, uh, why we have to go through this zone change, um, so they can continue, uh, farming operations on ag land. Uh, it's located, uh, near Venice Hill, approximately a quarter mile west of Road 188, two miles east of the community of Ivanhoe. Site plan locating the site, uh, you can see the city of Visalia to the southwest, the community of Ivanhoe to the east, and then the site in the community, or the city of Woodlake to the northeast. Uh, here is a aerial photo of the site, you can see Venice Hill adjacent to it. Uh, you may not be able to see it, but when this aerial photo was taken, there was actually naval oranges on the site, so it has been farmed continually, uh, for, uh, a while. Uh, the sites next to it were recently, uh, zone changed from AE20. This is a 20 acre, 20 acre, 20 acre, 20 acre, these were all zone changed, uh, as a parcel, uh, map, and I'll come to that later. Uh, this is the draft zoning map, uh, this is located in the AE80 zone. And, uh, this shows you which portion of the site, uh, will become AE20.
Excuse me, uh, Chuck, could you also show them the extent to which AE20 is depicted on that map?
Uh, yes. The... All the way up Road 88 to Avenue 328, I believe, this whole section right here is AE20 zone. So, it's not, uh, a hole punched in, in an AE80 zone, there's, uh, a lot of AE20 zone surrounding area. That's correct. The previous parcel map, uh, it was, it was 40 acres inside an AE80 zone. So, when they did it, they, uh, reduced it to 40 acres during that time. Uh, the purpose of the property of this, uh, zone change is so the applicant can replant, uh, fruit trees on the site. Uh, the applicant received a loan, uh, the owners of the loan restrict income-producing activities on the site. Uh, so what's gonna happen is, uh, once the owner pays down some of the loan, the Veterans Affairs will actually release a portion of the site to the applicant, therefore he will be able to lease the site for farming operations. And when the total loan, the loan is, uh, completely removed, uh, from the site, then they will, uh, boom farming operations on the entire site for both 40 acres. So, the 20 is gonna go first, and he's gonna, uh, restrictions will be removed for that 20 acres, and then the preview, uh, the other 20 acres, uh, when that's removed, then those will go into avocados or cherry units at that time.
Well, actually, what we're doing is we're putting fallow land back into agricultural production by approving this.
That's correct. Uh, and that's because of the type of loan that was, uh, a, uh, applicant received from Calvet. Consistency on the issues, it's in our rural valley land plan, lands plan, usually an RVLP checklist is conducted for zone changes within the rural valley lands plan, however, since this is considered agricultural operations, it's considered prime agricultural land according to the Williamson Act, and it is greater than ten acres, the policies of the general plan do not require an RVLP checklist for ag to ag with these declarations. An environmental document was produced, an addendum to the original parcel map was prepared in accordance with section fifteen one sixty-four, the guidelines. The negative declaration for the original parcel map was prepared in November thirteenth of two thousand and two and was approved by the site plan committee at that time by resolution zero two zero nine two. At that time, the negative declaration said there was no significant impacts for the parcel change. The previous parcel map, as Mr. Diaz explained earlier, created seven parcels and six of them went into AE twenty zone, and this particular parcel was the remainder, and even though it was zoned AE eighty, it, it, there's only forty acres left of that zone, so it became a forty acre parcel in the eighty eighty zone. There was no public comments ever received by the county at this time, and the timeline, again, we received the application July ninth in two thousand and thirteen, the zone change initiation to the board supervisors, which was approved yesterday by the board supervisors. And then today, the planning commission has its hearing to recommend approval to the board supervisors. We're going to the board supervisors for the first reading on September tenth, and September twenty-fourth will be the actual hearing, so another quick process, a little over sixty days to process a zone change within the county. The recommendation, which would be one motion, which is recommending approval of the addendum to the negative declaration to PPM zero two zero one one for the zone change and recommend approval to the board supervisors of the zone change, PZ thirteen zero zero two. That includes staff's remarks. The applicant is here, if they have any, if you have any questions, and thank you.
Hey, this is a public hearing, and would the applicant like to come forward and testify? If so?
My name is Herman Cassidy, the owner, along with my wife, Virginia, who is in the audience also, and we live at three two eight oh one, road one eighty-eight, Visalia. Just a brief explanation, in two thousand and two, we entered into the escrow for this property, I obtained a Calvet construction loan on the property and subsequently built myself a house with my wife, and I've gone into some detail in the supporting information that I've provided to the Resource Management Agency. I won't go into that detail, but I would certainly, first of all, thank the commission for taking the time to entertain this request, and especially to the Resource Management Agency from Mike Spata and his efforts, along with Chuck and also Jason in that department that have done just an excellent job of being team players and ball carriers. And with that, that's the conclusion of my comments unless there's a question that you might have for me.
We read everything you wrote and it was very well stated, so thank you.
Thank you.
Any of my fellow commissioners have any questions? Seeing none, anyone else like to testify? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and go on to the commission's.
Mr. Chairman, just a brief comment.
Sure.
This was an excellent land use analysis in order to justify this zone change in, in ag territory, and your observation was very astute. This zone change is to facilitate and promote agriculture, not to deter agriculture. The second observation I would like to make is that the board of supervisors approved the initiation of zone change yesterday, it's before your commission the next day. That's a change.
Yep, we're moving along. So I'll move to my fellow commissioners, would someone like to make a motion to approve this project? Nancy? Here the agricultural person.
Okay. I move to recommend approval and subject to modifications as discussed by the planning commission.
I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Gong.
Yes.
Elise.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Yes. Whitlatch.
Yes.
Eliano.
Yes.
Foreman.
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you, Mr. Cassidy, have a good day.
Thank you.
So we'll move on to the planning director's update. We have one more?
E.
Boy, I'm losing it today.
Sorry.
We're going to let Ed take over.
We're talking about a setback variance, it's a setback variance, PSV one three dash zero zero one, and has to do with a five-foot setback that's encroaching in Terabella on, this is, looks like it's on the west side of Walnut Avenue, approximately three hundred and fifty feet north of Terabella Avenue. Yesterday I received a picture from our staff and I made copies for our commission to look at. I will go ahead and open the public hearing and we will take staff's report, please.
Good morning, chairman and commissioners.
Scott, good morning, Scott.
This is a setback variance as just previously described. Staff's recommendation is the denial of the setback variance to allow a front porch addition to encroach five feet into the building line setback. This is located on the west side of Walnut Street, approximately three hundred and fifty feet north of Terabella Avenue, Avenue ninety-six in Pixley. The vicinity map shows the town of Pixley and it's toward the eastern end of Pixley on Walnut Street. The, the site plan demonstrates the, the existing house here and the, the front porch addition right here that encroaches into that setback area. You have the picture in front of you, this is the picture, this is the, this is the front porch addition that is subject to review today, and this is viewed from Walnut Street looking to the north. The findings are the hundred and forty-four square foot front porch addition was constructed without approval of building permits, resulting in a violation V three one two dash zero zero seven, and the mandatory findings for granting of variance could not be made. The existing zoning in the area shows predominantly R-one single-family residential except for across Terabella Street where you have some general commercial zoning. There are no species of concern within the area, it is urbanized, and likewise, there's no waterways or wetlands in the area. This project was sent out to property owners within a three hundred foot radius and noticed in the Visalia Times Delta. No comments from the neighbors. Again, summarizing, this is a setback variance to allow a front porch addition to encroach five feet into the building line setback in the R-one zone located on the west side of Walnut Street, approximately three hundred and fifty feet north of Terabella Avenue in Pixley. The recommendation is to hold the public hearing and to deny the setback variance, PSV thirteen dash zero zero one, based on project's lack of adequate findings to warrant the granting of a setback variance. Planning commission alternatives is to refer the project back to staff for further study and report to include an environmental determination and revise staff report and draft resolution recommending approval of setback variance thirteen dash zero zero one. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you, this is a public hearing, is there anyone here that would like to come forward and testify on this for or against? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public comment and go to the discussion with the commission, and I have something to say, but I'll wait for my fellow commissioners.
Question, how did this come forward?
The violation, a building inspector out in his normal duties noticed it, reported it as a violation, and then they were told to apply for a variance.
I have a question. Scott, what is the size of those lots? This house is built so close to the line, this, this picture's kind of deceiving, your picture shows it so much better with the street right there.
The porch is not, the porch is the problem, not the house.
Right.
Right.
But the house, I mean, it's really close to the street, so.
The house was on, was within the setback area or outside the setback area, it's just that when he went in and built his porch.
Right. Now he's out, I realize that, but I'm just saying it's just a very, very small.
Now, in the city of Visalia, for example, in order to utilize, of course, this is a big lot, but in order to utilize your lots better, if you want to build a porch and you're going to encroach into the setback area, it will be approved with a variance. The things they're concerned about is if the garage is in the, then it causes a traffic problem, but a porch, in my mind, is not a problem, it, but it's not consistent with our planning, and, but it's consistent with good use of existing land, especially on smaller, smaller lots. This is something that Don Fulbright, Old Town Construction does all the time, to utilize the space, and I think that's been a discussion, our commission is to better utilize our land.
And it's not affecting the parking at all because there is no garage.
Still twenty feet from the curb. Right, and this guy has done a nice job improving home.
I was just going to say, it's such a nice-looking, well-kept.
I think what it's saying is they would not have allowed the building permit for this, right?
Well, had there been, had there been other houses with similar things on that street, you know, I could have, that would have helped make findings for, you know, granting the variance, but, but it's within the setback areas.
I would suspect you drive around, you'll find it ten times that many.
You go looking for it, you're sure as heck going to find it.
Anyway, I think we should encourage people, especially in some of those poorer-type neighborhoods, to do these kinds of improvements, so I see it's an issue with our zoning ordinance rather than, you know, they should have got a permit, but that could be solved, but.
Is there something that can be done besides tearing down the porch? I mean, is there another avenue for them to take?
That would be the alternative recommendation.
What have the applicant or the violators said? Did they say anything, or did they have any inputs, obviously?
Well, this was at the project review committee, and the applicant showed up, spoke, in fact, I had to have Velma, we went, met outside in the lobby of RMA and went over the details of what he was up against in applying for the variance, so spoke very little English.
Mr. Chairman, if you want to refer the matter back to staff for us to evaluate the alternative and come back, let's say in thirty days, we're happy to do that.
But also, I, I think that a lot of our zoning ordinances, I know you're busy, you can't do it all tomorrow or today, we need to look at some of these countywide because there, there is good cause to allow things like this, and so, what's the pleasure of the commission? I would agree, we, we should send that back for, for more, a detail, perhaps a proposal to detail out that ordinance, if I have variances allowed for certain conditions versus those that are not allowed for certain conditions.
Probably cools the house down, so maybe.
Some could be safety, some could be aesthetic, some could be something else, but I think it needs to be more specific. But I think on this particular one here, we're just, I agree with you, but also for this, we just need to refer it back to staff for a, put that up so I can read it. Resolution was, second, second choice?
Refer the project back to staff for further study.
That's it, right.
Include an environmental determination.
Recommending approval.
Yes.
You're making that motion?
Yes, I would love to make that motion.
I would also add, if you don't mind, have, take a look at what might happen if they're going to widen it, or if that street has to be widened.
That's.
It's still twenty feet off the curb and it's fifty foot from the center line, so that's a long ways.
Well, you, don't you have to look at the ordinance and then decide where this one fits into it? You can't just approve or deny this, this particular application because you'll set a precedence. You first need to define what the ordinance should say, and if there are variations off of that ordinance, and then how this particular applicant fits into it.
Well, I think that would be the, referring it back to the staff for further study.
Right.
For them to do that.
Right.
Have any motions?
Mr. Spata, do you agree with that?
Yes, let me, let me just make a comment. What I would suggest that we're going to do at the staff level is reevaluate the findings, and what we need to do is find special circumstances where, I don't think it's a matter of setting a precedent because we can easily say it's a case-by-case evaluation without setting any precedent because there are unique circumstances and facts here, so I'll be, we'll be okay without having to address, we can still outline the ordinance for you, but I think we can do it through the findings. I mean, you've said some things here, this is a tough case because we do have a situation where it was done without a building permit, however, there's no opposition, it is a positive improvement to the property, the property is aesthetically pleasing to the neighborhood, so there, there are some good factors here, but I think the observation of Commissioner Diaz is well-taken, we need to consult with Public Works to ensure that if there's any widening, that would have to come down. And then that presents a problem for us if there's any eminent domain, or if there's, you, you can see that this could be a future problem, so I think that was an astute observation.
Okay, we have a motion and we have a second, I believe, by Commissioner Diaz.
October ninth, that, that seems to be the thirtieth date. Is that correct, staff? All right, thank you.
I have a motion on the floor.
You're going to second her, her motion? Roll call.
Gong.
Yes.
Elise.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Yes. Whitlatch.
Yes.
Eliano.
Yes.
Foreman.
Yes.
Okay, I think I covered all the items, not gracefully, but we'll go to the director's report. Good job, Director.
Kudos to you, you did a masterful job administering a number of complex cases today in less than two hours. Well done.
I wasn't here for two of them, they were really complex.
Very well done. Very briefly, yesterday at the board level, an extensive report was given by our Building and Housing Division with regard to substandard building abatement, which is a very successful program, especially for the past two years, and we will give that same report to you very shortly. And the only other item was the Cassidy matter where the board unanimously approved the, the zone change and we came immediately to report. That's an example of how we're streamlining in the sense that the applicant takes the risk and says, all right, process concurrently initiation request as well as the underlying request, and especially if there's a recommendation of approval, so that there is no gap, thirty to sixty, ninety to eighty gap to get to your commission, that another ninety to eighty gap to get to the board, that's all been compressed in less than sixty days, so that is a very positive, limiting effect that we've accomplished. That's all I have, thank you.
Anything else for the, go to the order, if not, meeting adjourned.
Wait, 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 we got one more thing, one more item. We have a handout on the conference, and I just want to say, the best way to do this is if you're having guests to accompany you on this, book those yourself through the website, and it's explained on here, the links of where you go to. The standard registration for each commissioner, Velma will be able to do that through the website, and the county can book that, anything beyond that, then you should probably book that on your own credit card, and then, you know, of course, you're, basically, you would need to be there Thursday night, October eleventh, and then Friday. and then Friday night, October twelfth. The, the uh, conference concludes about one PM on Saturday, so you got plenty of time to get home on Saturday. So it really is um, kinda pressed into all-day Friday and a half-a-day Saturday.
And then Thursday night.
Yeah, Thursday night, so you can be on top of this by eight AM in the morning. The hotel's an amazing hotel in downtown San Jose. The normal booking rate of that hotel's about two-eighty a night and for the conference, it's going to be about half of that. There is some parking options, which you need to investigate. Um, there are several garages in the area and some are a lot less, so you could uh save the county a few bucks there. The sessions, there'll be a lunch provided on Friday. The sessions are very good and they're dealing mostly with water and climate change. The Friday um, reception has what they call, um, well, it's, some places would look at it as hors d'oeuvres, but it's gonna be a complete spread, so your dinner will be covered for Friday night also. There's no traditional banquet to this like we've had in the past. It just adjourns on Saturday. But Saturday has some really interesting events. The breakfast, which is not included, is a separate ticket, which, which is optional, but you might wanna tell Velma about that one too. Um, that's a discussion with all Planning Commissioners before we board the bus. The bus tour will be very interesting because we're gonna look at some state-of-the-art water reclamation facilities and also the new stadium for the Forty-Niners that's been built in the Santa Clara Valley there. And um, I think you'll find that this is a little bit different than what we've done in the past. We are going to be rubbing elbows, so to speak, with some of the people that are on the very cutting edge of planning and um, and doing a lot of the things that maybe aren't presenting themselves in Tulare County right now, but they will be down the road and they will give us tools to deal with water shortages and uh, other kinds of issues that are gonna come into play for, as development, um, you know, extends itself more to Tulare County too. So I think you're gonna learn a lot at this conference. It's going to be really impressive. It's, um, we're gonna um, rub elbows with a lot of the urban and academic minds because it'll be at the, uh, at the San Jose State Planning Center. There's also a very eminent speaker from Stanford University that's gonna be a part of the program. So the, I can't emphasize enough, we need to move right away on the um, sign-ups on this because it does need a, um, a preliminary amount by September seventh in order to make sure that the conference is a go. The room rate goes up on that date also. So go ahead and book your room right away at the hotel and it should be indicated on here, um, at the Fairmont. And uh, that doesn't cost anything and you can cancel the day of the conference if you have to. So get your room uh reserved right away, go on the website, decide what you wanna do in terms of your guest participation. And then let Velma know on your standard reservation, which the conference is, I think the fee on it is a hundred and ninety-eight. And that the county can provide that and any of your guests, of course, are extra.
I'd like to say that they will be rubbing elbows with our staff who are on the cutting edge. You realize that Tulare County was the first to have a large animal program, EIR, which has become an example for, for other counties. Uh, the whole water issue thing is a huge thing here. The city or the community of Strathmore, uh, you know, they're gonna be, they don't have enough water. And so they're gonna be restricting the amount of water you get unless something changes and this is a big problem around our county. But uh, our county does a lot of things like expediting a- applications. And so they're rubbing elbows with us.
That's right.
Who are on the cutting edge.
Well, by the same, by the same token, by the same token, we're gonna be with people who first designed an ordinance that you have to pick up after your dog. So this is something that uh...
We're also dealing with a community that within ten years eliminated every bit of agriculture in San Jose. I mean, uh, that area was a, you know, for tree fruit, it was incredibly productive.
Ten years. It took just ten years.
Everything was gone, so...
But yet we get to enjoy the open space while all those people are crammed in.
I'm suspicious of those people before we go. Anyway, having said that, meeting adjourned.
Mr. Chairman?
Oh.
I'm sorry, just one comment. I neglected to say this and this is very important. Today, uh, it's a sad day because this is the last day of Deputy County Counsel Nina Dong. She's leaving us. I, I can't thank her enough in general for her outstanding legal service. She's been very professional, very personable. And she even graced us to come, her last day, to be here at the commission. And I'm very grateful uh to her for everything, so.
Well, I know it was because of me and we're gonna miss you. You'll be sorry. You'll be back.
I know. That's what I hear.
Meeting adjourned the third time. Velma?
Did we not sign up for this already or is this? For the session, uh, we're not doing, we have to do the hotel. We pay for that ourselves. We're gonna get... We have to sign up for a session? Oh, really? Uh, wait, John? We, we, we just go to the whole, are there breakout sessions? Are there breakout? It's the whole thing, right? That's what that's called.